Okay. Good evening and welcome to school committees meeting, regular meeting of October 16th. I'll call us to order at 6:36 PM. Welcome to Morocco. We are in the Morocco library this evening. We are continuing our, our trek around town to all the different schools. I will just read off our agenda for the evening. So we're going to begin with public comment, followed by remarks from the superintendent, chair and student representatives. We'll have a consent agenda with an in-kind donation in support of athletics, H U D L, huddle camera application, reports and action items, including a brief elementary literacy update, budget subcommittee update, state of the town committee update and with a review of priorities. Then a first reading of policies, consideration of first reading of J K A A physical restraint policies with no changes, including C L, J I C C, J I E, K H A. And then those policies which have updates from M A S C, including C A, C B D, C B I, C H A, C H C, C H C A, J I, J I H, J I E, oh, oops, sorry. J J E.
J J E.
Need those glasses. K B E, K I. And then policies for deletion, which include C C, J J E R, J J I F R, J L D and J L D E. Then we'll have future agenda items, next meetings, executive session and for the purpose three, discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining and then adjournment. So with that, we will go back to public comment. Do we have anyone here for public comment? Seeing, seeing no hands raised, I will close public comment and we'll move on to remarks from the.
Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to Morocco. It's kind of nice to be here. It's kind of nice that we're doing this and went around to the different schools. This was a double classroom, as you know, and there's a rule wall in between. This was all carpet. So this flooring is completely new, fresh paint and most of the school spaces have received fresh paint and new flooring. So I think it's made a huge difference. We've been over here a couple of times just to hear people talk about it. But it was a major upgrade for, for the school, for the kids, for the staff. So we're glad to be here tonight. We are just really right now plugging along on mainly spending a lot of time on contract negotiations with the remaining four units that we are still negotiating with. We are negotiating with, we have a session with unit C tomorrow at three, at four o'clock on a Friday. I'm not quite sure if we scheduled that. Oh, why, I agree to it. And we have unit A again on Monday. So we're, you know, we're, we continue to make progress and hopefully we can get some, get some signatures on some contracts here before long. We are also working hard on the budget, working hard on the state of the town information that has been a heavy lift, not normally within kind of our budget cycle. So it's been, it's thrown us off a little bit. There's a lot, a ton of work going on with literacy, with Assistant Superintendent Kirby going to here tonight, some of the updates around that. It's just a kind of really an overview, brief update. We'll come back to you again on November 20th with, with a cadre of people who will be able to give you some really good detail and some samples, examples. So we continue to work with middle school and schedule. We also, Dr. Ellenham has been spending a lot of time with high school and transitioning with, with principal, interim principal Ponis and assistant principal Paradise and assistant principal Dupree. That, that transition seems to have gone well. I don't, I should have asked you before. But it seems, it seems that it has been very seamless. I think staff has really adapted quickly and well and which is not surprising as, as have the students. So that's really, you know, we're, we're often really kind of into it now. It's a great time of year. I love this time of year. It has started to feel like it's slowing down just a little bit, like it's not quite as crazy. So looking forward to getting into the schools a little bit more within a couple of few weeks. So that's, that's it for me.
Thank you. For the, from the perspective of school committee, we've been getting ready for fall town meeting. I'll be putting together the presentation for article one for town meeting. Our two articles went out for, went out to the town clerk, which were on the Mystic School Surplusing and then also on the Geographic Information Systems Study, which was, which was also, or which was, which the planning board had also agreed to co-sponsor. Many thanks to them. Town meeting members can see a brief update in the Town Meeting Members Association Bulletin, which just went out yesterday, the, from the different boards in town. The school committee was one of those. So you can see some of the links from some of the meetings that we've had recently. And our town meeting dates, just to mark your calendar, we are beginning on November 3rd. We'll have a pre-town meeting, meeting at 6:00 PM. And that's where we will look at the articles and vote on the articles that we recommend favorable action on. There are quite a few too that we'll be looking at. And that is all that I have. So Ingo, from student council, welcome.
I think everything at school has been going smooth. It's going good. One thing I would say, I don't know if you can do anything about it, it's just like lunch, I would put, I would have a little more of the hamburgers. And then the hot lunch normally goes, like third lunch, if you go for a second lunch, they're normally out of it. And lastly, like fruit cups, those are like, like all kids love them and they're always out by first lunch. So if you have second or third lunch, you'd never get a fruit cup. Just more of those would be great.
Thanks. You'll be noted.
That's all. Love the practical.
Get down to it. You love it. It's very helpful. Very helpful.
Any questions for Ingo or? All right. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. With consensus from our members here today, I'm wondering if we can move up policies to the consent agenda because all of the policies or none of the policies is new. So they're all first reading.
Yeah, absolutely. I'd move to, move the policies to consent agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Only three of us all the time. This would be.
It's very easy now, you have ten minutes. Not, not get overconfident though.
All right. So therefore our consent agenda consists of the in-kind donation in support of, of the athletics huddle camera application and then also the policies that were updated and the policies that were deleted.
So since that's a first reading, I would be happy to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda, specifically approve the in-kind donation in support of the huddle camera application.
I'm dying to know what a huddle camera is, but I can save that for them.
It's like a recruiting tool, right?
Yeah. And it's like live streaming the games.
And the kids can.
Can they watch their tapes?
Yeah. And I think they can make their own little highlight reel, right?
Yeah.
Nice.
We just have new ones installed. It's easier.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I thought I said that first. Okay. Thank you. So our consent agenda is approved?
Yes. So we'll have the second, the approval of the policies at the next meeting.
No, that was the, we were, since there were no new policies, we were just.
Oh, right. Okay. So we're, all right.
Okay.
Happy to also make sure that was part of the motion for the minutes.
Yep. Yes. Okay.
Great.
Let's see. So moving right along, we have our reports and action items. So we'll begin with a brief elementary literacy update from Assistant Superintendent Kirby.
Yes. Are you?
And you know what? Just take it.
All right.
Go with it.
We'll work together, Andrew.
Yes. And we will have a more deep, this is just very high level tonight. So that we will have a much more detailed update on November 20th.
Right. The best is you have to come in, as Frank said, we're going to have a whole group of people that are going to really make what we're doing come alive in ways that I just won't be able to, but I'm going to give it a try. So tonight. We believe in you. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. So our goal tonight is really just to give you an overview. So much has happened since the last time we were together in June, really diving into what, where we were in literacy and where we're going. So we're just kind of teeing it up so that when the group does come, they can really get into the specifics and talk about their own experiences and most importantly, the students. So we'll give you an update on the timeline and then just talk about where we are in regard to the piloteers and making sure that we're communicating out to the all-state colleges. So those who are in the pilot, the core teachers and families and caregivers. All right. Just go forward. So last year, as we had talked about in June, we had a very great partnership with CES and we worked closely together. And our primary goal last year was to really develop a culture where we could put everything on the table so that we could take the next best steps moving forward. And in June, we wrapped up and as a group had decided that we would be piloting two programs this year. One is arts and letters and the other is EL education. So we really hit the ground running this year. In May, we made the decision that those would be the two that we were piloting. And from there, we began to lay the groundwork for what this year-long pilot would look like. And this year-long pilot is something that is rare. Many districts who are piloting will do pieces and parts of these programs, but we are really all in. And it will make a difference in March, when we're ready to recommend what program we feel best meets the evidence-based curate rubric as well as our shared district vision. So that's where we are. And then just looking ahead to where we will be going, we will continue to implement, we will continue to evaluate and review as we go through this process next year and the following years. It will be an ongoing process and we're working to put systems and structures in place so that we can do it regularly and without being a heavy lift. So our vision, we are, you know, as last year as an ELT, that core group developed this very comprehensive vision and now it is on all of us to really make it come alive. What does that look like and sound like? So as a district, what we're doing is in each of the meetings that we have together, we are using this as our starting point. And we are diving into each of these bullets so that people are very clear about the direction we're going, why we're going there and really thinking about those practices that will make it come alive, really thinking about the evidence that we collect and does it align to what we want for all of our students. So again, so much, so little time and so much has happened. So as you all know, last year, UFLY was implemented in K to two. That continues to be the case. And again, that in November, I think you're going to hear the benefit of that and what, how our students are developing as, as readers. And we, as I discussed, have the pilots. What we included this year as a result of the work we did last year is we have a group of resources that we're using in grades three through five to complement what's happening in grades K to two in regard to explicit structured phonics instruction at the various levels. So grade three looks very different from what's happening in grades four and five. And we have resources because in our shallow dive last year, as we were reviewing the different programs, it was noted that there may not be enough. So in the event that we find as we're going through this process, that is the case, we want to be able to think about what other resources might complement these programs. These are also resources that are available to all educators, three through five, whether you're a piloteer or you're the core program. We continue to do DIBELS three times a year and actually tomorrow notes will be going home with the results and just information around where your child is and what good next steps might be. The timing is just right as we think about conferences coming up next week, like an opportunity for parents to ask any questions they may have and for educators to share, this is what we see, this is what we noticed, this is the direction we're going and these are supports we have and this is how you can partner with us at home. The reports will look very different from what they've looked like in the past because at the end of last year in the spring and then we picked it up again in the fall, we're using M-Class. And what that does is it just stores the data and then it takes the data and it organizes the data. And then it allows staff to really take a look because it will make groupings depending on where students fell in the screener. And then there's a third layer to it. It is, these are suggested evidence-based activities that can be done to help this student move forward. So this we're finding in the very short amount of time that we've done is really appealing for tier two intervention. And we'll talk about what tier one might look like in, in a moment. But what I will say is in the spring, everyone in K to three got that initial training and it is very different. It's different because it's done on a computer or an iPad. So those just bring different glitches or just different issues. And so having that in the spring and then having a timeline where we have to find out where our students are, we decided that it was for data purposes. We wanted to have the cleanest data and we wanted to make sure we were able to implement data, I mean, DIBELS at the start of the school year. The literacy team took this on. So it's been really wonderful to see this group come together and there are literacy specialists, our coaches, they really dove in at the beginning of the year together with the literacy coordinator, Melissa Newell, and they worked through those technical glitches and they dove into the different reports that were there. And they, in each of the buildings flooded, each of the classrooms and grades K to three and administered this round. So this allowed teachers the opportunity to refresh and then dive a little deeper. So this week and then last week, we went into the second part of the M-Class training for staff. So what that did was it allowed them to again, practice using this tool on a computer and it showed them the power of this tool. They saw the different reports that were available, they saw how groupings could be made and they saw the different evidence-based instructional practices that were attached so that they could move students forward. And then we have another tool, sorry, Andrew, we have another tool that we're using and that aligns to the UFLY program. So this is more the day-to-day and it's the progress monitoring where DIBELS is the screener giving those indicators that we might need to delve in deeper in these areas. This is week to week. And what this does is for that tier one, for that general educator, again, it's just a very powerful tool. It allows teachers to scan, scan their weekly assessments in. And this program will generate different programs, different groupings and offer different lessons and activities so that they can best support their students. So much. What do you mean their UFLY assessments? UFLY, the progress monitoring. So this is more the day-to-day where the other one is the overarching. And then we are working on where are we going to put all of this information? And then as we continue to evolve and develop and expand our portfolio suite, we need a place to store all of this with easy access. So we're looking at the Open Architects Data Platform. So we're excited to be learning more about that and using that tool to help us get a better picture of who the students are and then where we should be going next. So talked about this already, but we can move right on to the next. And yeah, so this is, this has been going up, but it can't be, you know, seen enough that you'll see that at each of the schools, we have classrooms that are piloting EL and arts and letters. And then we have some schools, just because of members, that are piloting, there have three classrooms that are piloting versus the two. And this is just based on interest. We ask for volunteers for the criteria being, we want this to be a team effort. This is a, hard to take this on. And the power in this again is just that ability to come together, really collaborate, look carefully at the program, look at the work that we're seeing from students and how it aligns to our vision. So we already went in, we're diving in already. We have ELT 2.0 and we will continue to partner with CES and that's the Collaborative for Educational Services. And their role this year is very different. They will be working with us and it's a huge lift and we're very appreciative. They're going to be collecting data, they're going to be coding the data, they're going to be sharing out the data and then sharing it with us so that we can make those best next decisions. And it will help us to think about the tools that we're using so that we are, we are getting good feedback so that we can make this very important decision at the end of the year. So Andrew, we just show on, I think the next slide is telling the story as well. So to give you a little bit more granular on what this will look like, our partnership with CES this year, you'll see that the pilot teachers, the literacy team, every two to three weeks will be filling out an online survey. And really what, what that is, is what's going well, what are your challenges, what do we need to know as we go forward? And this is a tool that today we actually met with CES, there's a group, a steering committee and the steering committee will work closely with CES to refine the tools when we need to refine them, to listen to the data and then to think about, okay, who, who needs to be getting this data and what are those next steps that we should be taking? What questions haven't we asked? So that in March, we can make a very solid recommendation with all of the feedback from all the different stakeholders to all of you. And as you'll see there, students are very much, you can stay right near Andrew, this is perfect, students are very much part of this process too. There's so much to be learned from them and we're excited to hear where they are. It's been fun to just go into the classrooms and hear because again, they're telling you what it is and how it is very, very clearly. So it's been, it will be great to get that data. And then there will be focus groups for caregivers as well. And this is a timeline of what that would look like and we will continue to update you as we go through this process so that you're very clear about the when, the where, so you can be a part of it if you choose. So what are some of the highlights? Again, I think there's so many at this short time. What I've been and what people really want to get out there is that people are excited about working with their teams and they're excited about how this process has strengthened what was already there or wasn't there and they're just, they need to because this is a heavy lift, thinking about what, what are their strengths? What are they contributing? And how can we as a team use our strengths to best get to our, to our end of the year? So that's been so great to see and the excitement, again, I think we'll, you'll see and feel that in November when they come and really talk about that. I think the other highlight in all of this is that the literacy team is in and they are really getting a good understanding of what these programs are and it's going to be in with that knowledge that we're going to be able to really refine our intervention skills program. What should be part of that? How do we make that consistent? How are we using these programs, these evidence-based programs to really thoughtfully plan that next layer for our, our students, that intensity, that frequency, what are we using? So them being part of this has just, it, it will make a huge difference, I do believe. And I also think that it's giving, yeah, them a window into what, what that general educator is doing every single day and how we can be more partners in meeting kids where they are and giving them what they need. So it's just strengthening, going back to that collaboration. So we are excited that we're again, thinking about the power of collaboration. We are so fortunate as administrators, we get to go into classrooms every day, we see the best of the best and we can lift and we can celebrate. And so we know that's a powerful tool of practice. So we're being very mindful about how we approach this because that was a highlight of last year. It was going into other districts and having the opportunity to talk to other educators who are doing the same thing and talking through different challenges and successes. So we are thinking about the tool that we're going to use that aligns with the rubric, the curate rubric as well as our vision. And once this tool is developed, we want to make sure that educators are on board. To have people come into your classroom, that's taking a risk, that's being vulnerable. So we want them to be able to weigh in on how often, how many people? And are we really clear about what it is, what are those look-for's as we go in? Because if we're all thinking different things as we go in there, our feedback isn't going to be as helpful to us as we're heading in to make a final decision. And I think this is going to be such a powerful practice for those that are not part of the pilot program because we want them all along this journey to feel like they're in it with us and we, and their voices really will help to inform what our next steps are going to be. So site visits in district, out of district will happen, whether you're a core teacher or a piloteer. And again, I just, we can't thank the piloteers enough because it is taking a risk to allow people to come into your classroom, to really be open about the different shifts in these knowledge building programs and letting go and, and adding to and being open to that is, is a lot in that change process. And people are doing it and, you know, they, when they're struggling, they let us know. And I really, again, I think we've been in school 26 days, I think the kindergarten friends told us, it's been a short amount of time. And in that short amount of time, the struggles that you would hear now, today versus what we heard three weeks ago are very, very different. And really it does come down to they're just putting it all out there, they're asking for what they need, they're leaning on each other. So we can't thank them enough and just, you know, recognize that we see them and that they, that this is a heavy lift, whether you're in the pilot or not, because there are different struggles with that as well. And then the professional development, we really are being, as we always are, just about who are we, who is our audience? What are our end goals? And how do we set? And how do we set every single person, whether you're a pilot ear or you're not, up? So that they have what they need. So when we bring in this new tool, they really have a good understanding of the why and they understand the different routines and structures um and protocols. So all along this year, whether you're a pilot ear or not, it's just building up your uh instructional toolbox. So we're excited by that. Some of this hurdles because they're real and they're there. And we, you know, have been addressing them as we go and we have some real short-term wins. But then we have these long-term issues that together, um, we have to really consider and, and plan best next steps. And so these structures and systems, they've been huge, right, to support this shift. So what, what does that really mean? Well, it starts with an educationally sound equitable schedule. And it's really hard to do with all the different parameters that we have in regard to what the programs say the amount of time is, what we need for planning time and specials, what we need on, the list goes on, and math. And we need science and social studies out there too. So it's really making room for what matters. And at the start of the school year, as a district, we did this protocol. Keep, stop, start, and try. And that really has resonated as we're going through this process because a lot of things we do because we're done with or all these different reasons. So really we're just kind of slowing it down and really thinking about our schedules and being consistent across all elementary because it is about equity. That's why we're making all of these different shifts. So we've got room to grow there um as we think about the core block that you need for literacy, the all blocks or the differentiation block where we can do all of those interventions and then that time for that explicit phonics. So it's a good chunk of time and how do we fit in everything else? Um, and the technology is a, is a glitch and we're working through that right now. And the glitch is this, there's this technology with all the different programs. M class, art grade minds, and EL education. And with that, it's just the behind the scenes, it's creating the rosters. It's making sure the classroom teachers have all of their kids all set up so that they can see all of this data as they're inputting. Well, that takes someone here to do that. And again, we have a very small but mighty group, but it's, we're rethinking that because it is a heavy lift. And when we're pulling one person to go do this, they're getting away from their green, but we're doing it because we need to. So those kinds of things um we're, we're considering as we go forward. Learning the new methodology and material, that, that's, that's, that's different, it's a shift. And if you were not on the ELT last year, and not all the pilot ears intentionally know we're on the ELT last year. So it's, it's getting people to understand the why behind it. So in all of our meetings, we're starting with the vision, we're starting with the why and really just kind of diving into each of those whys. We're shifting in this direction to really deepen the understanding. So yesterday we had a grade level meeting, all grades came to five, started with, we had the pilot ears and the core teachers together. We just, let's take a look at our vision. What does that look like and sound like in each of our classrooms? And then the pilot ears had an opportunity to share out, looking at again, how were rubrics? What was usability? Why, how was it attached to uh engagement? And what are the texts like, the materials? So it was an opportunity for us to go around and have an opportunity, if you're a pilot ear, to share the highlights and hurdles and for the non-pilot ears to ask questions. And it was also an opportunity for just the pilot ears to come together and be like, not just me, right? And we're seeing some overlap in some of the highlights of the programs and some of the hurdles. So that conversation really got started yesterday. And with all of our grade level meetings that we have, and I say all, that is not many, but we're gonna make the most of it. But these are all things that we're considering as we think about these big initiatives. How do we fit it into the systems and structures that we have in place? So that whole idea of coming together and planning and really, you know, rethinking about our instruction and how we go about incorporating writing in here. Takes time, it takes a lot of conversation. So it's finding time in the school day to make that happen. And when we give there, something's gonna give. So we've been having lots of conversations around, when is the appropriate time for that? We have to find that balance of, well, we know the impact that teachers have when they're with their students. If you're not there, then you can't be doing your best. So um it's really just thinking ahead. What, what does the calendar look like for next year as we scale this up? And we're adopting for entire district, looking at our PB days and really just being very open to changes that might need to be made in order for this to launch successfully. And then it's just always just, again, it's that time, that issue of time. How do we leverage the experiences of the pilot ears um so that they are able to share their highlights and hurdles together and then with the, the form? So here, just quickly so you can see, this is uh what has been done since the last time we met in June. We have the Arts and Letters, they've been meeting together. We have the administrators and coaches, again, they are having their own PD so that we're all understanding these programs, why we're shifting there, what we should be looking for and listening as we are going in and out of classrooms. So there's the overview for the pilot ears. And on the next slide, you'll see that we've taken all of the time that we've had this year. And really, this is what grade level meetings will look like. We've used all of them and you'll see December is still open, but we'll do the same January, February. And then we'll look very much like it did yesterday with that uh overlap of share. And then March, April, and May, we'll have our decision made. So then it's like, how will we gear up for that next year? So we're again making use of the limited time we have the best we can. And you'll see here, our two point O has expanded so. And we did that intentionally so that we're including a variety of roles. We want to make sure pilot ears' voices are heard. We want to make sure the core building leaders, special in. And we want to make sure our ML voices are heard. So we have a core group here and our charge this year is going to be thinking about curriculum cohesion. We're gonna be thinking about the assessments that we're using and why we're using them and then building off of that and communication, communication, communication. How are we reporting out and showing where we are, where we're headed to all the different stakeholders? So we'll be creating a uh plan going forward to do that. Um, and we met just once and we meet again next week. Um, really, and uh from just our first meeting, that is when you started to see, oh, these are the different ways that we're communicating. So there were principals were sending out common messages, we had district messaging. And then during faculty meetings, uh, the ELT members were sharing out uh the where we are and where we're going and how you could partner with us. We've already talked about the uh steering committee and collaboration. And again, you'll see we have the key players. The difference here is you'll see that we have uh the coordinators in here. Again, with the knowledge-based program, we want to make sure the social studies and science are very much a part of this so that um they can see how they can extend um what is already being done in the classroom. So looking ahead, we are going to go out and do some literacy chats. Um, Melissa and I will be going to different uh parent associations meetings with the WIPAC from both Amaro and SPED. And we're excited to be thinking about entering classrooms and here in the district and out of the district. And then that's about, that's it, that's it. And as we think about November twentieth, what we'd really love to hear from you is, what are some of those things that you're curious about? You know, who just want to, us to make sure that we hit on um when we come back to you on the twentieth. And again, thank you, thank you, thank you for all of your support through this and for the time tonight just to kind of celebrate where we are. So we appreciate that.
Thank you.
That's it.
Wait a minute, that was awesome.
You took us to the whole, would you go through the months of school year? Like, we were like in March.
And how was it? Thank you, Mark. My audience.
Uh, thank you so much. Any questions, high level? Seeing as how we are circling back to this in a month.
Just thank you and thank you to the educators and everyone really doing this work. I, I know I've said it before, but it's a tremendous lift for educators to take a new curriculum on, even um experienced educators who've been doing this work for a long time because it's getting your head around a new way to deliver information and make sure that you hold on to all the um good ideals and, and concepts of teaching that you've obtained over the years and at the same time, learning new ways to do that. So um I, I really applaud the educators who are taking this work on. Um, it's no easy lift and I think we need to keep saying that and thanking the teachers on the ground in the classroom, the kids who are experiencing it. It's a shift for them as well. And um even um even for parents, it's going to be a different way of talking to their kids about literacy and uh reading and writing. So um it really is a community effort when you take on a new curriculum like this. So thanks so much to everyone doing that work. And um, you know, I just wanted to reiterate to Lori that while this is a tier one curriculum, um, while these are new tier one curriculum, um, they have embedded supports for both um reaching um ML learners and students with disabilities um embedded into their programs and also opportunities for extensions for kids.
Correct, yes.
So that's something that's, even though it's a tier one curriculum, that everybody's getting the same thing and we can deliver it in the curriculum, we haven't lost the ability to differentiate credits as well.
Are any of the co-teachers part of the program?
Yeah, that's a great question. Yes, so we have co-teachers. Um, I feel like there's probably five different teams with co-teachers. And then we have ML that are attached, so they're using the different components. So Arts and Letters has their own system, as does EL has their own system.
And they also both have embedded assessments as part of them as well, is that true? So we're not just totally relying on M class to think about whether kids are making progress using these programs, but we're also looking at the assessments that are embedded as part of the curriculum and looking at his actual reading and writing ability and write about what they're doing.
Yes, yeah, that's a very important. Absolutely. And, and that is the reason we're leading to consider, what are the assessments we have and what do these indicators provide? Where are the gaps?
And what we might be duplicating, we need to duplicate.
Absolutely. Yep.
I was at the Ambrose Open House.
Oh, wow.
All right, what are we talking about?
Literacy.
Literacy, we just, they have lots of thought.
Although it is just a high level update today because they're.
It was fantastic.
It was outstanding, it was really good. You could watch it on the recording.
Okay.
But we, we are coming back to it in November.
Okay, no, I just want to say thank you again for, for the update. Um, I think the slide um that um sort of spoke to me the most was the one with the sort of um highlights and hurdles on it. Um, and I think, you know, we are in a transition year. And so all I would say is, we should not be um reticent to um highlight those for our families as well so that they know sort of um from a, you know, high level, it doesn't have to be super in-depth like it was tonight. But I just, I love the fact that we're able to be reflective about that and actually explain that these things do not come without some level of risk. Do not come with some things that can go up and go down um in, in terms of, of the outcome. And so um, you know, in terms of our communications with families through parents, we're in that just being able to be transparent about that and say, you may see this, you may hear that a classmate's, you know, experiencing one of the pilot classrooms. And, you know, I, I just, I think to the extent that we can say that we're hopefully looking forward to the future, but understanding there are gonna be some bumps along the way. I think that's, that's super helpful um because it's, it sort of feels like we should put an under construction sign on, on the, the elementary literacy program for the year um and understand that.
And learning is messy, can't be said enough.
That's correct, so.
You're, you're good also.
So I was glad to see that and I just hope that we can sort of more broadly communicate that as well. That there are a lot of wonderful things and some things we're, we're still looking to, to close gaps on, so.
And Dr. Matthews aligned with that. I would also say um to highlight what you um mentioned, Lori, which is that um just because you're not in a pilot classroom doesn't mean that the teachers that are not in other classrooms are not experiencing the PD and the observations and the ability to have cross-conversations between what's happening in those classrooms. So I also don't want to feel, uh, parents to feel like if your children aren't experiencing the literacy pilot, that they're not also getting outstanding literacy instruction that's based on the same um philosophy and skills and knowledge.
I think that's really helpful to know. So that was just my, was, you said communication, communication, communication. And it made me think, let's, you know, definitely be as upfront about that as possible. Because I, I have definitely heard from folks who were like, I don't know what's going on with, you know, because it, it, it is sort of disconcerting if you have a sibling who might be in a pilot classroom and another sibling who's not, you know, a friend who's in a pilot classroom and, and your child is not. I think that's just something that we can very clearly communicate. And I think this deck did a great job of that, so thanks.
And I appreciate you saying that and I would just follow up because I feel like another highlight here is that people are finding their voices and they're more confident in where they are, who they are, or, you know, what their experience is. So having you all say that, it gives permission to be vulnerable, to share the good, the bad, and the ugly. And that is critical as we go through this process. And sometimes all at the same time. It can be an ugly cry and a whoop.
So I've been having a child in the fifth grade um Arts and Letters pilot at Ambrose. And he came home one day, not saying this is what we learned in Arts and Letters, he doesn't understand that far, but he did come in telling me about the Nez Perce and the tradition of storytelling and the components of a good story and why we pass down stories. And I know that it's part of the Arts and Letters curriculum, but he doesn't know that. And he doesn't know that he's being a guinea pig either. Um, but he came and we had this great conversation about, why do we read? Why do we have these conversations and pass down stories from generation to generation? Um, and I thought that was just a great way to kick off the year here in fifth grade using that. And I know it was coming from Arts and Letters, so that was really such a beautiful demonstration of what's being done in that classroom. Um, so thank you for that. And my, my other daughter in second grade, not a pilot classroom, but still learning how to read, right? And that's, and that's great. And we received a letter in the mail. Um, well, she brought home a letter saying that she actually needs reading intervention assistance in the classroom. And I'm so grateful that she has those resources and she's getting those services. We read every night and, you know, we, we work on various aspects of literacy at home. Well, she got that letter at home and I'm reading it. And I was confused, I'm like, you know, we are collecting data, we are collecting assessment tools. And would it have been great if that was in the letter that came home to me? Because I know that DIBELS was probably factored into why she's receiving these services. And so I thought it would be great if I was gonna have the conversation with the teacher and the super, and the, um, excuse me, the literacy specialist to say, none of that was in this letter. But it would have been great to have that guidance, to know that, oh, in DIBELS, she um's phonemic awareness or and comprehension, where, where are the areas that we can also work on at home? Just to have that communication as well, so. Just reporting from the front lines.
And one, just that again, how fortunate we are to have these supports. And we should celebrate, like, we drive these, this is fantastic. Here we have the experts that are gonna be working together, give your, your child what they need. And then in regard to that timeline, seeing that we're a little bit off. So we were just talking about that with the literacy team today. And what we found was, we, we planned it out, and we did this in the spring, and we didn't realize that how the efficiency of this M class tool. So we got a little ahead of ourselves and we want to hold back on this because we have these resources, we want to use them so that the kids get what they need. So that is very helpful and you will see a change as we go through this.
Yes, yes. And then when I spoke to her, to her teacher, she said, you know, I put her into M class. It's this great new tool and I'm like, oh, I know M class. Bet out all these exercises and then she brought some home that we could work on. And my, and she, my daughter's like, mom, we're gonna read this until it's smooth. And I'm like, oh, I like that word. Um, so yeah, so there are, there is great work being done, communication. I know we're always working on that, we are collecting great data and the sooner we can get that to parents, the better, right? And I love, I, I'm sorry, I missed your, I missed your whole conversation about this. So apologize if you have to repeat yourself.
And tomorrow, I was saying, you will be getting all of that DIBELS.
Yeah, on the.
You're gonna get that, it's a little off. A little off.
Yeah. And conferences are next week.
Your conferences are next week. So you can talk through it all.
Yes, gonna be great. Thank you again.
Yeah, thank you so much. Uh, the report, I'm really looking forward to the detailed report coming up on November twentieth. So
Thank you.
All right. Uh, with that, um, we'll move on to the budget subcommittee update. Um, our budget subcommittee with Ms. Burcham and Ms. Benyargi.
So there's just no way we can follow that, Ms. Benyargi.
Oh, man, I'm just hitting the ground running.
Let's just settle room.
It's really hot in here.
Um, would you like to open the slides for us, Ms. Benyargi? If you don't mind. So the budget subcommittee.
Uh, is it okay if I if I leave?
Budget sub, this is the best part.
Thanks for coming. Thank you. Wish him a happy birthday.
Send it. We 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 all sang for him in spirit.
So this is our second meeting of the budget subcommittee. Um, and um, oh, go back, Ms. Benyargi, because that was so exciting. We have to celebrate our reusable trays. Mr. Popcraft isn't here for his inability, so I have to pick up for him. There's our new reusable trays at Lynch. So Okay, we Um, so at our second meeting, we started to look at the end of year report from FY twenty five. It's the closeout on the FY twenty five budget. Um, we also um took a vote to recommend to have the GISTIC Childcare RFP go out for a new five-year contract and we had an update on the state of the town budget process. So this should look pretty familiar to everyone. This is the FY twenty five. This is the actual expenditures now total. Down in the lower right-hand column, you can see that um we did revert eight thousand six hundred or six hundred and fifty dollars and I'm the opposite of you, Ms.
Fifty one cents.
Fifty one cents. Thank you.
I just got breaking glasses last week, so
To the town. Um, so that was the money left in our account at the end of the fiscal year. We highlighted um the, in the available budget lines, the high school, the middle school, um Lynch Elementary. Those were the items where we had the changes in the um central office budget. Where um we had removed things from the central office budget and put them back into the school buildings as well as the four hundred and twenty-six thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars that we had actually accessed the Special Ed Reserve Fund to bring a balance on that for the end of the year. Does anyone have any additional questions about this? We've talked about this budget quite a bit as a committee. But please ask anything.
Love this.
I love this. Yes, this is so helpful.
We're in the people's business.
This is his new vertical timeline from last year.
As Ms. Benyargi said, we are in the people budget. Um, that is eighty-eight cents out of um every dollar went to our personnel expenses. That supports our teachers and staff throughout the district. Twelve cents on every dollar goes to um other expenses within the district. So that would be curriculum materials and supplies and athletics and items such as that. This is um a way of looking at that personnel, just zoomed in a little closer now. And the different units that um we support as well as our non-union employees and our substitutes. Breaking that down. And this is a representation of that twelve cents, that um smaller amount. Um, and the breakdown of that of what you can see, the majority of that goes to out-of-district tuition, out-of-district transportation, general ed transportation, um athletics as highlights. So the district is also working with the Controller's Office to review the town expenditures that support district operations. This is our pure pupil expenditures that are reported to DESI. They're going to make recommendations to the superintendent and town manager for review. And once it's approved, they'll be incorporated into next year's end of year reporting and also approved by DESI. Is that correct, Mr. Maron? Yeah. So the district childcare RFP, really quickly, this is the motion that um we would are recommending that the committee adopt tonight to send out um an RFP for a five-year contract for childcare. This time, we have successfully had kids borrow in the district for quite a while now. And we certainly do expect them to be one of the respondents to this RFP. But um we are at the point where we need to send that out again. I'm happy to stop here and we can talk about that or um we can come back to this at the end. What what would you like to do with that change?
I was actually thinking that it might be good to stop here.
Okay.
And take this up.
Maybe I'll just make the motion and then we can
That's it. Um, I vote that we authorize the Director of Finance and Operations to act as Chief Procurement Officer for the School Department for the purpose of issuing a request for proposals or RFP for a district childcare program and to award and execute a contract for up to a five-year term, including potential renewals.
And we are happy to take any questions on that. Ms. Benyargi and I talked quite a bit about it with Mr. Maron. So I think we're all set.
Second, second.
Second? I'm sorry.
Yeah, of course.
Absolutely. Um, all in paper?
Hi. Good work. I feel like we don't need to discuss it.
Excellent.
You know, it's it's great, but
I like the movement to five-year term contract.
The five-year term, I think, is great. And
That's great.
We all trust Mr. Maron and the excellent work that he continues to do on behalf of the district in these realms. So thank you.
And just to clarify, it is um, it it is one-year renewals. So um, we discussed the possibility that in in uh possibility where like it was a new childcare provider that didn't come in. We we could look at them again after one year.
Got it.
So we do have that option.
Great, thank you.
I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Benyargi. So um, I gave the budget subcommittee an update on the state of the town. We mentioned that though we are still in the middle of unit A contract negotiations, it's difficult to understand what our projections will be. Considering that's our biggest single budget line item. However, what we have been talking about at State of the Town, as you all know, because you're members of the State of the Town. So I guess this will be a quick update. Uh, we've been looking at our past budgets to see where the biggest changes have been for the last three years, two-year horizon. Where our pain points are, where are the points for growth, where we want to focus um in the budget for growth. What our priorities are. And we presented the same priorities that we spoke about at our September eleventh meeting. And we'll be presenting tomorrow morning as well, including our FY twenty-six budget figures and looking at the change from twenty-three to twenty-six. But again, everything is contingent upon the contract negotiations that we are in in the middle of. Uh, and we also spoke about our capital assets, as you guys know, because you're also committee members. But for the record, we also have been talking about our capital assets, specifically McCall, Ambrose, um Lincoln. All of them. Everything is in play and all the maintenance work that needs to be done. So HVAC, roofs, curriculum, they all need maintenance. TLC all the time.
Chillers.
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 That's that's an HVAC system.
She's going to be a mechanical engineer before the year.
Yeah, yeah.
Any questions?
I will just make the quick comment that I am very grateful to our superintendent and our Director of Finance and Operations for their heroic work. Superintendent alluded to this in his opening remarks. But there's been a tremendous amount of work to get these um different elements of the state of the town process um in place. Um, and all of this, just to be very clear, is feeding into the model that is being created, which will then give um an output about um how much money needs to be solicited from um the taxpayers of the town in order to to meet our needs. So this is, I think, pretty much the last step before we're able to lock down the model that will give us a sense of where we're at in terms of our ask of town.
My one ask is, are you creating more than one model? Are you creating a model that is sort of an aspirational model and then
Yeah, I would say the model is
Scenario, for for model.
Okay.
Yeah. So the model is sort of the um term I'm using.
Yeah.
With most of variables.
You know, we've sort of gone back and forth on what to call them, but one of them initially was austerity. Which makes sense. One of them is level services, which I think that was the hardest thing is sort of getting to. Because we're at this very awkward place in the year where we're not really aware of what is going to happen with FY twenty-six yet. And so we're still sort of finalizing that to get to the normal sort of late winter, spring development. Um, but that needed to exist in some form to be able to actually
Right.
have us figure out what this year looks like and therefore what would be twenty-seven, twenty-eight and twenty-nine. Um, and so these two have been doing heroic work to try to to zero in on that. So austerity, level services, um and then
Aspirational?
Two aspirational. Well, uh, one, I think, which is very much the stuff that we absolutely need.
Right.
Um, and then there's the sort of, you know, larger set of absolute stuff that we need. Cause you know, I would say we're going to talk about the the priorities next. But I would say that a lot of what we've already put forward, including in last year's budget development process for priorities is pretty essential, like in terms of
Right.
beefing up.
Those are not aspirations.
They're not. We're calling them aspirations, but in many ways they're not, right? And so
We said it's not our school district of dreams. That's not the one, right? We're building our school district of dreams. That's
But I, you know, I think like a lot of districts, as we all know, a lot of districts in the state, we're sort of contending with this like the amount of money that we're, we need just to basically turn the lights on in the same form every year.
Or just as we know it, just to pay our staff.
Correct. And so it's, I think there are sort of going to be two scenarios potentially for the quote unquote aspirational. But I wouldn't say that either of them is particularly aspirational. They're just I think a a higher level of being able to do well what we're
Maybe it's level services plus summer.
Correct.
Yeah. Growth options.
Yes.
Yeah.
Exactly. So um, but yeah, so that model will, but the key part was to get to understand roughly as we believe it to be right now, what level services for FY twenty-seven would look like in the best guess that we have, given the fact that it's October
Right.
instead of March or April of next year.
I'm not trying to even define what is growth, Ms. Benyargi. I even say it's um working on funding things that have been long to burn.
Correct.
Right. So it's some, it is a version of level services.
That is, that is a good point. Because when we say we want to update our math curriculum, I don't think that that's really asking for anything that's aspirational. I think that's a bare minimum.
So I I will, so today I happened to, so we have friends who live in Melrose. As many folks know, Melrose is in the middle of um the second try at doing an operating override to support their schools. They've had some pretty draconian cuts over the past year. And I saw two slides um from the materials that they're putting up on the sort of yes campaign that were super helpful. One of them was, there's a question, you know, has Melrose always spent below, well below the state average per pupil, similar situation to we're in. And the response that was no, actually until two thousand and five, uh, Melrose hovered near the median before starting to drop off. And it's now in the bottom eight percent of the state for for per pupil expenditure. They're actually worse off than we are. But the thing I loved about that slide was that it said at the end, you might remember a time when Melrose had the resources it needed. Unfortunately, our investment in the city and schools has not kept pace over time.
Right.
And I think that's a lot of what the sort of aspirational scenario that we're talking about is making that catch-up
Right.
to keep pace better with the changes that we've we've seen over time. Um, and then the other thing I loved is they add, another question they had was why does it matter if we spend less per pupil? The answer was, when we underfund, we number one, lose support staff who help struggling students early, leading to higher needs down the road, speaking to Ms. Kirby's presentation and all of the literacy efforts we're putting a lot of um energy into. Number two, we fail to provide in district support for all learners. We leading to out-of-district placements, which are expensive for the city. Um, and number three was we burn out our teachers and lose them to better funded districts, which leads to more costs to find and hire new teachers.
And train those new teachers.
And train and get them on board. And so the headline of that was, underfunding now costs more later. I just thought it was, you know, sort of reading it, I thought it was a really good summary
Right.
of the perils of of going down that path. So
Very well honed points.
Correct, yeah.
Great.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I but it just, it it spoke to me because it sort of was a concise illustration of all the things we've been sort of talking about and why this is important.
It'd be great to connect with them.
Yes, agreed. But underfunding now costs us more later. That's like
And underfunding years has cost us
Correct.
more already.
Correct. So that's mine. But yes.
It would be our move.
Yeah. Yeah. Exactly. So anyways, I thought that was really instructive and helpful. And so um, yeah, we will hopefully come up with a better marketing term than aspirational, because I think it's
Yeah.
I've been, I've been shopping essential. No one's picking it up.
Essential.
I like essential. So level services and then the next step is essential.
Essential.
Essential services.
Essential services.
Yeah. Okay, I like that. We're gonna make a stick.
Thank you, thank you.
Such a service.
I need to smell.
Yeah. We're shopping.
Thank you.
All right. FY twenty-seven.
So we um we remain committed to the um budget development timeline that um we had developed last year. This committee and um Dr. Hackett and Mr. Maron um have really um been thoughtful about developing this and having it meet both um the way that the district moves through a school year and moves through a budgeting process and providing opportunities for um staff feedback and planning, as well as community feedback and planning. It also continues to match historically, um where this committee has been by the end of January is that the budget that we generally vote by the end of January is our uh preliminary level services budget. And um with this committee's support, I think the budget subcommittee had agreed that this timeline would be the one we would continue to move forward with this year. The wrinkle, as we have been chatting about, is um the uh potential override and where the state of the town committee will be landing on that. Because we will both be developing this budget while that process is going on as well. And speaking to the lift and the load that Dr. Hackett and Mr. Maron are taking on, this adds another layer to that as well. So this is looking towards a vote at the end of January as we have done and as we have agreed with the town to have a vote on our budget. Our public hearing on the twenty-second and then the committee vote on the twenty-ninth. We'll continue to take feedback through February. I am sure that that is also going to be a feedback process that we will be aligning with the state of the town. And um working collaboratively with uh the select board and the finance committee and committees throughout town that are affected by um the override.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, Michelle. Um, I don't know if I asked this question during our subcommittee meeting, so apologies for the addition, but come January twenty-ninth, are we going to present to the committee two budgets? One, assuming, because select will have, the ballot will be printed, right? We'll go what number we would get if an override should pass. And one, if it doesn't pass, right? So are we going to present two budgets?
It might be three.
I was just going to say, we, I think we talked about it might be three.
It might be three. So override success, override unsuccessful, and the
And level services.
And just level services.
But the budget we would vote would likely be a level services budget because all things being equal, that would be the budget that we would go forward to a town meeting, override or not.
So in the priorities that Dr. Hackett presented for FY twenty-seven, it would not include any of those.
It would have to.
That would, that's going to be part of our level service.
Have some of those, some of those pieces definitely would have part of level services. Literacy.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Yeah. Which means that we would have to make some other decisions to be able to get it in.
So what would not be in there?
That is a good conversation.
Thank you. Thank you, both of you. I didn't know what I was going to say there.
So in the previous override, I remember seeing and more than, or this, before I was a school committee member. But when the superintendent came around to the different schools and the different parent associations, she talked about what would happen or the, just a different budget. So and what would be So and what would be, what would happen if there, if the override passed? And what would happen and what it meant if it did not. And you, we saw it from, or we saw it very concretely from school side and then also from the municipal side.
So I understand that the two budgets, the third one I'm not understanding completely, but I guess we'll get there.
So some of that just depends on where town meeting lands too, right? So if um if the override
If our sales were in a four million dollar deficit.
It is, but it depends on if town meeting is willing to use free cash to close that deficit in that year. To meet our level services that we need to move forward. So there is always the possibility of the level services budget continuing to move forward for the next fiscal year. If there is, if the money exists in free cash and if town meeting is willing to use it to close that gap.
And if so, you also have to reassess their reserve ratios as well.
The same as we do every year, right? So that's the same
With a four million dollar deficit, we're pressing up against that, and so they would have to revoke that as well, but that's there, not our department.
Right, exactly. That's why I said there's a lot of ifs, ands, ands, and pathways that could happen. If that, if that, um if we come to that crossroads.
Right.
And I will note that that policy, I think, is written in such a way that it can be, it can, you can
Six to ten percent.
Correct. And well, now it's ten to fourteen, so they changed it. But um the, there, I know there are other communities where they've fallen below. Obviously, it's not a hard and fast policy necessarily, but I know there's been other communities that have faced this, where they've basically decided to for at least a temporary period of time to fall below the policy. Understanding that it would get made up at some point in the future.
Successful override.
Or
The following year.
Yeah, or budget cuts of a certain kind, or, you know, that just basically say, you know, in this year, we're gonna make a choice to go below the the pol-, because the policy's not, you don't have to follow it necessarily.
Right, it's not a law, it's a policy.
So, and that's the, so they don't necessarily change the policy. I I've seen this in other communities, not in Winchester before, but basically they they fall below temporarily and then come back up. There are some communities, which I I I find this interesting, there's some communities where they they sort of regularly go below it at some point during the fiscal year. And then kind of top it up. Um so this tends to be the communities where they have small overrides every year. But basically, they sort of are, you know, I I think Brookline is one of them that I I I may be misremembering, but I think they they basically do these little, you know, top ups and then so they they can fall below at some point during the fiscal year and then sort of comes back up again. So it's an interesting thing. There's a lot of different ways to approach it.
Yeah.
So we've just not done that in the past, which is part of the specific history of Winchester. So This all looks great. Thank you, Budget Subcommittee Friends.
I was gonna say, so that meaning that everything from February down
Is
Is a project in motion.
Correct. Yeah.
But the election date is set in stone, March twenty first. That's the only date we have for certain.
Yes.
Once it's on the ballot.
Once it's on the ballot, so they have to actually vote it, but
Right.
I, my, my thought is that we are very likely to see it on the ballot, so. In some, in in some form, yeah.
A number.
Thank you, Budget Subcommittee Friends, we appreciate it.
Which led us right into state of the town, which so I You may have stolen some of your time.
No, no, no.
Well, I think this is more of a focus on um reviewing priorities.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think already did a great um update on, sort of broadly on state of the town, which I think is good. And so um I think this sort of allows us to just look at our our um got priorities again. Andrew, maybe
Can you pull that up?
Pull that up for us. So I will, I will say, you know, during the state of the town process, I have often thought about this as something that now, having been inside the model. Um I guess I had originally thought about this as um an exercise where we needed to kind of have an ordinal, ranked ordinal for each of these individual elements. The way I'm starting to think about it now is, and it sort of is, I think, speaks to what I was saying to to Ms. Berkestrom earlier, is, you know, there are things in here that I think share an equal priority. Which is to say that I would, you know, I would say that there are things in here that are essential um for us to to move forward. Um and aren't necessarily like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. I I think there are categories of these that all sort of are at number one priority. Um and so, you know, the the sort of request that we've got from the state of the town committee. Um which I think, you know, sort of knowing how the model development has taken place. Their, the request that we've gotten is essentially to help them um come to a number. Um and so to sort of understand at different levels of the number. Um if we did not have enough money um in the sort of total override number that's put on the the ballot, what are the sort of convenient breakpoints? Rather than an ordinal ranking, one, two, three, four, five, twenty five, whatever. Um that what are the sort of breakpoints um at which the select board is able to make a better decision about what the final number is, since so much of it is actually driven by the school department um and the budget needs that that exist um to to sort of do our catch up. Um so instead of thinking of this as we need to actually sit here and debate the merits of these relative to one another. Hi, um, oh, hi, welcome.
Yeah, sorry.
No problem. Um but to to debate the merits of these relative to one another, um that we kind of just need to think about how urgent each of these priorities is and knowing that there has to be a breakpoint at some point. Um the the select board is going to need to make a decision what that that total number is on ballot. Um what are the things that we feel most strongly about? You know, we sort of, if there's a sort of lower and a higher scenario of essential needs. Um where would we aspirationally hope um those two scenarios landed? Um so that's, I don't know if that's a helpful level setting, because my brain has literally been shifting and thinking on this in the past couple of days, but um but I think it's just for us to indicate, you know, what are the absolute number one? What is the package of absolute number one things we we need to hopefully include should the the override pass? Um and maybe if there were um room for more on top of that, what would be sort of category two, category three?
So um from my perspective and working with leadership, central office, um leadership team. You know, the only thing that's on here that is a, essentially would be a, it would technically be a because we just have not built it out, would be theater. I mean, every, everything else on here.
It's an existing program, right?
Exactly. And and like when we talk about high school electives, those, those electives also allow us to get kids, students out of study hall, that allows us to have a flexibility in the schedule. Um it allows us to provide additional, when we're talking about electives, you know, we have students who choose their courses, right, and they and they they will number their pri-, their priority and we're just never, we're not able to be, and we never will be able to be every student's priority, but we could do, we believe, a better job of meeting more um satisfying more student priorities with with additional staffing.
Can I stop you right there? Because I've had this question from a number of parents in the community. How does expanding electives allow kids access to, and or does it allow kids access to more core curriculum classes?
Dr. Ellenama?
Um.
Or is it just offering them more things to follow their interests and to develop themselves?
Yeah, no, it does that, but it does alleviate some of the, when there aren't electives that they can get into. They might say, okay, I'm gonna double up on a science or a math that I would normally do. Where other students who may take that core class and that is their top pick, like won't, then now they're in competition for that same spot. Got it. So, but I would say it is more of the issue of them not being able to take things that they're interested in. It's not even looking at expanding what electives we have, it's just making more room in the electives that are already popular.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we kind of talked about this with even like Mandarin, and we just, you know, we we have certain, certain AP courses or certain courses that have a kind of a hard, not a hard number, but that we could use another section of, right, so we don't need
We're topping on the maximum
Right.
Number of students.
Right.
Yeah. So Dr. Ellenama, when um parents and students, faculties, and they want more advanced coursework made available, will that be a part of the elective expansion? Will there be more APs made available?
So that's not under the elective expansion, but that is under what we're trying to do around like science and computer science. Like we have
Like, yeah, we computer programming.
Science programs in our district, shocking with you. Um so it's being able to expand that and the additional FTE in science, like that would certainly allow us to increase our um AP offerings in science too, so.
Great.
If we're making wishes, we would have more, but
All kinds of more, I assume, not just
But we tried to prioritize where the pinch really was with what students are requesting and what we actually have.
But what I also heard you saying, I, because I think that's similar to the question I was asking, is like if we have more room in the schedule, then students schedule more, have flexibility.
Exactly.
They may have more access to things that they wouldn't have had access to before.
Exactly.
So it may not be a matter of necessarily needing more, but needing access even to the opportunities we already have.
Right. And when we make space somewhere else, it takes the pressure off of the other spaces, so, yeah.
And if like AP physics is only offered in, you know, period two and period four, and the student has they're, they're locked out of those two periods, because they're taking something else, but other requirements, then they're out.
There may have been another AP class that you've taped, but now they can't.
Spending those opportunities, yeah.
And there's a lot of competitions for what we call them, singletons in scheduling, and there's a lot of competition with those singletons, like if you're in this band, like that may meet the same time as this one section of a different AP, so now you have to choose between the AP and band.
And of course, the thing that's implied in all of this is that not only do the students have the challenges, the teachers also, because there are certain teachers that can only teach. Or there's certain subjects that only one teacher can teach. And so they can have a singleton period as well, where they don't really have a choice. That has to be where it is. Even if you all know that there's a particular conflict, it doesn't help when the educator is locked into that particular period as well, so.
Now, I understand this list of priorities was detailed over um the last year.
Sure.
And um and I appreciate things like, you know, transportation for field trips, because it makes all of our five elementary schools more equitable, right? By providing those opportunities to all of our students, regardless of our elementary school day attend to. And but part of our discussion around state of the town is, you know, we're talking about one Winchester and addressing these inequities and as we're looking at our budget priorities, I was thinking about, as Dr. Hackett coined the phrase, user fees. Like when, uh, you know, a third grader wants to learn an instrument during the school day, they have to pay, I believe it, three hundred twenty five dollars to get that instruction, plus the rental fee of the instrument. Um our athletic fees, right? Um and, you know, unlike some of our peer towns that we compare ourselves to Winchester, and touch upon this as well. We're kind of an à la carte town, right, where you're gonna spend a hundred dollars on your steak. But you have to pay extra for the mashed potatoes and the broccoli, and, you know, everything else is extra. Um whereas in our other peer communities, it's kind of all in, like Belmont, for example, doesn't charge athletic fees. Um and, you know, and similar with music instruction, that happens during the school day. So I was wondering, um I know if we want to have this conversation now or at a different meeting, if we want to consider adding these user fees to our budget priorities. Because although we say, yes, this is of course for eligible families, we we won't charge a fee. However, it is really difficult to not only reach those families, but also for them to step forward, saying that they want access to that. Um so that that, there is a lot of friction to that model. Um and again, it's just one of the budget priorities that we talk about when we're looking at inequities, and that's part of state of the town, we're talking about one Winchester, and I think that that serves that goal. So I don't know if the committee wants to talk about adding that as a priority or maybe another day. I don't know what the protocol is, so.
I think when we talked about this before, Dr. Hackett, we looked at it um the budget line for the adding to to redo, to eliminate all fees would be several million dollars.
Several million? Because the athletic fees are half a million.
Half a million.
And then the
But
Music fees.
But music fees require um hiring staff to then do that and provide that during the day. Because right now, the student fees are paying for the staff.
Ri- right, right.
So, yeah, you're talking, you're talking in the
We're not paying them a million dollars, right?
For all the fees.
I was like, we're not getting Yoda for our kids.
If we're talking about eliminating all user fees, so if we're talking about eliminating athletics and bus fees and preschool fees and music fees.
Yeah.
I think, Mr. Marin, do you still have a slide on that from when we discussed it before? I hate to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I was looking at my notes. I think, yeah, every fund, there's a, like an offset on the general operating side.
Yeah.
I think transportation is about, I think we carry sixty percent operating budget, forty percent revolving fees.
Hmm.
Yeah, uh, it's about four hundred thousand, and then the, I think athletics is closer to fifty fifty.
Yeah, so it's like five hundred thousand. Talk about that at Budget Sub, where we look at, break down those user fees, where are those costs coming from? Are they growing over time, perhaps? If we can get maybe just like the last couple of years of data.
We have, we do have that already, because Mr. Hopcraft and I talked about it at Budget Subcommittee last year too. And that's
But I mean, while we're putting together, again, not building, I don't, I don't think it's aspirational. I do think that that's essential. I think all of those services that we provide, and as we're talking about building out a theater program, we should also be supporting the existing ones that we're providing, right? Before we build something new, we should support what we currently have, right?
Uh I I would say from my own perspective, I mean, we, we have a lot of equity perils in our current model. And I think we're all abundantly aware of those, because as you said, I think my biggest concern since joining the committee has always been around the willingness to ask for an exception, or the willingness to ask for you know, to step forward and say, this is not something that works for our family. Um whenever you create that situation, you've created a barrier.
Absolutely.
Automatically.
Because you have to have that bravery and courage to approach whomever to
And vulnerably admit that you need help, right, which is
Yeah.
Hard, um and
People just don't do it.
No, I I was just gonna say, and I think people make the choice not to do that.
Right, and even if your situation changed, right, if your financial situation should change, it's difficult to put yourself out there in the community, especially a small community. And say that I'm in a vulnerable state right now.
Yeah, and I think that's, you know, it's like, who are you speaking to? Is that person a safe person? Is a rumor then going to go around about, you know, your, so I I have a lot of concerns. Um and I'll just sort of add to that, you know, I I think I'm glad that we're addressing the field trips. I've had some questions about that. Um I think one of the other decisions we need to make um is whether, you know, we want to, given the fact that the override will give us a one time increase in the levy, right? Do we still want to do phased implementation of these things, right? Because
No, I think for the buses, we're doing it right off the
Correct.
No, I think, um I I I hear what you're saying, Mr. Matthews, because I think that's what happened with the last override, is that we um the town and the state of the town committee at at the time made the agreement to do a phased implementation. But as time went on, that money then got used for things other than the original intent.
That's what I'm concerned about for our literacy implementation next year. Uh we're gonna do a full implementation next year, but it is dependent on a successful override. Because otherwise, we're gonna have to do some phased approach, right?
Or it comes out of
That's not acceptable in my eyes, right? And for the new literacy uh curriculum that we want to implement, it's gonna be all five buildings going forward, otherwise it's gonna be half specialist here, half of, you know, whatever pi-, whatever program we choose, half of the school will be doing that, and the other teachers will be trained the next year. No, we don't want to do that, right?
No.
So I I feel like with state of the town, if the override is not successful, that that's kind of what we're stuck with.
I don't think so.
I don't think, I mean, I I'm
We're stuck with some of it.
We're, correct, and I think that we would then have to make, I think it then comes back to this table, and we're gonna have to make some hard decisions about what we want and what we don't want, and I mean, I can't speak for anyone other than myself as a member of the committee, but like, I would advocate for a full implementation
Yeah.
Next year regardless, I would cut other things to do that, right? And that's, you know, I think that's the reality that, you know, you talked about, who was it that was talking, you were talking about, Ms. Valenice, I was talking about the super, former superintendent's road show as part of the last processes. You know, Dr. Hackett is going to have to make clear to everybody, you know, that we've, I mean, a- as far as I'm concerned you know, that we've, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, we've very clearly committed to that at this table. And so the austerity or even level certain, you know, the level service, I think it's, the version was said earlier, like the level services actually means cuts probably next year if we don't get the override funded because we're gonna have the additional, very substantial additional costs in for literacy curriculum. And so
And my advice to you would be, you need to start that work soon.
Correct.
What is that? I'm sorry.
Starting, you, you need to start looking at your austerity budget and what you would bring and how you would put those priorities into a budget now.
Right.
Because the education process is gonna take a lot of time for people to really understand. That I don't wanna be knocking up against like the the override vote and not have had the opportunity to get out there and give people the information they need to have.
Yeah, cause it, I mean, in my mind, it's, we're probably talking about things like larger class sizes, fewer teachers, right? Like in order to actually get the literacy curriculum implemented. And, you know, I think that ultimately it's up to the community to decide where their priority level is around that, right? It's like, we are going to have to make the hard decision if things are not funded or aren't funded at a, you know, at a higher level. Um, we're gonna have to make the decision and I I for myself would, you know, a hundred percent support fully implementing the elementary literacy curriculum and looking at cutting other things in order to do that. So, you know, I I think, so what I'm saying in summary is the other thing I want to sort of get a temperature on from the committee tonight before we move on is, you know, do we support the idea of not doing, like going to State of the Town and saying, we actually, we have phased implementation in here right now. However, we would really like it to not have to do phased implementation anymore. Um, as like, as part of the the decision-making process around the number that the select board ultimately chooses to vote upon, um, we would really not like to do this in phases. We would like to say that, for example, the field trips are fully supported in the first year. The elementary math specialist, obviously, we've already done two and a half, so we would complete that work. So that would be the second stage of phased implementation. I'm glad we were able to move forward with that.
So I think the challenge of that, Mr. Matthews, is the way that it affects the taxpayers as well. Because, um, and it may affect the success of the override is the reason it was phased the last time as well. Because if you don't do a phased implementation and they access the entire amount of the override at first, then it hits the taxpayers' bill
Quicker.
quicker and at a much higher level than a phased implementation does.
And I think that's, ultimately, I think that's the policy decision that our select board has to make.
That is what I was just going to finish by saying.
And I, you know, as far as I'm concerned, if we are gonna, I guess what I'm trying to say is
So I think we need to figure out priority wise, which of these things are not phased implementation and which ones could be too.
Right.
And that may be the difference between our level services budget and our aspirational budget.
Yep.
There are some things in here that may be one-time expenses for us.
Yes.
That are not over time. Um, the initial purchase of the literacy materials, I I'm still, and and because we're still in the pilot, it's kind of like settling the contract. Some of these things, we can't be completely certain on yet, because we don't even know which program we're choosing.
Yeah, we don't know what needs repurchase upfront versus is an ongoing
Which is the, which is the maintenance budget for those programs. And I feel similarly about, uh, the mathematics pilot and resources, right? So we were able to fund that out of free cash for the literacy program this year. And is that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a math pilot, could that be a one-time expense or is that an ongoing expense? So I think some of these things, we might have to dig more deeply in at a budget subcommittee meeting as well.
Yeah.
And maybe come back to the committee, put some more information around those questions that um, you're asking, cause if you're asking them, State of the Town is asking them, the community is gonna be asking them of us as well.
I mean, I I I think in my own, so just, Mr. Marion, can we scroll down? Cause I, so for me, field trips, phased implementation, I would rather just
I think we, we, at the last meeting, we said we're just gonna do the fifty K
Yeah.
across the board.
Well, I think it's
It's more than fifty K, so we were phasing it in.
It's a hundred or ninety or
I think it's gonna have to twenty-five for school.
No, yeah, before it was
So it's one twenty-five is the total number?
Yeah.
All right. So I I would like to at least agree that we just say that's, if it's one twenty-five is the number, Mr. Marion, that that's, we don't support phased implementation of that. I think that would be great to just, it's not a large enough number in my mind that it's worth phasing it. Um, and I think it's impactful enough to your point, as Minyard G about fees, like, I think it's actually a pretty impactful pain point for families.
Yeah.
And equity of opportunity across schools for kids.
It's something that happens during the school.
Correct. It's it's an educational
It is not optional.
Right, like it's a, it's part of your education.
You're not staying behind, you're on a field trip because you can't afford it.
But we definitely have
Not that we're doing that.
No, no, we don't do that. Everyone is invited, everyone goes.
But I will say, I mean, de- depending on which school you happen to be enrolled in the district, you may be going on more or less trips during the course of the year. And that's not equitable. So I, that is one that I'm very passionate about, making sure we do not phase in. I want that to just be a one-time change that gets rolled out across all five schools.
But educationally, I think that we need to then send this list back to Dr. Hackett and the leadership team as well and ask those questions because I think they will have a better sense of which items on this really could be, um, better utilized if they are an upfront versus a phased implementation.
Yeah.
Because
You finished it already?
Because some of these things, they may need to phase as a team as well.
Right.
And, um, saying that we're going to do them all upfront, we may not have the capacity as a district to do them all upfront either end to end well.
Yes.
I'm not sure there are many that are phased, am I?
World languages, theater.
Electives.
The electives.
Oh, the electives, yes.
Yeah.
Instructional materials, math, curriculum.
Well, it's like a pilot, so we can't do both, right?
Well, math curriculum is interesting, right? Because
And then curriculum.
You're one pilot, you're two, it's similar to literacy, right?
It's similar to literacy, right?
To me, it hits, it finally has a full budget impact in FY twenty-eight.
Right.
If we move more quickly or FY twenty-nine, if it takes longer, I don't know. But your, your, your bandwidth is for doing it right.
Right, and that's, that's where I'm saying, Dr. Matthews, right?
No, not me.
I think if we're talking about upfront, I really think that in fairness, we need to ask the leadership team to take another look at this before we start making decisions as a committee.
Yeah.
We would appreciate that. Hope we have the leadership team.
Great. But I mean, I guess, I guess the sense is, do we see anything here?
I'm just, just sorry, I'm confused. Are we paying for field trips? And it's in their entirety or just the buses?
Buses.
Oh, okay. That's ten K for per building.
Well, no, actually, we, we said, we said twenty-five K.
Yeah, a lot of buildings.
Okay.
Transportation plus.
Right, like added admission fees.
Oh, blood, oh, blood, kind of, okay, that's right.
Right.
So it is the full field experience, so admission to the aquarium, admission to the museum of science, et cetera.
Within reason.
I love it, I love it.
Law mills.
A hundred percent.
They're not going to see Hamilton necessarily.
Correct.
Unless we write a really good, telling letter to get a grant.
A lot of volunteers to Chaffron.
So many members for this.
I just went on a field trip today. We went to the Pels, it was quite lovely. My full day.
So it feels like what we have left to do
That feels like it's within budget.
Actually, our guys were about Winchester Trail, you got the Winchester Trail, don't you?
Yes.
An all volunteer service here, well within budget. The PTO president of Lynch was actually one of our guys.
And the
Science in your own backyard.
And a lovely day for it too.
And no cell service, I will add.
I think that's an added bonus.
Just awesome, because you got the elementary
I hate nature.
They're all locked up, all those watches are locked up.
All right. So it feels like we've got, sorry, I just, it it feels like we've got two things to do. One of them is Dr. Hackett and team need to sort of delve into, you know, verify if
Which items need to be phased and which ones
Phased, but also timed, exactly. You know, what
Phased by time.
We know exactly. So I'm assuming it's
Plus a B called priority. I think priority is good, right? Because if, rather than phased, right?
Right.
Want it to be a top priority, meaning full implementation.
I think what I am personally saying is, I don't see a lot of things here that are lower priority. That's the thing that I struggle with.
Yeah, I agree.
And I don't think phased versus not phased affects that. I still, like, there may be some things that are high priority that need to be phased.
Sure. No, 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 that's true. But I think it's
I think it's hard to remove anything from this list. The number of times we've looked at it, the number of times the leadership team has looked at it and the input from parents.
Well, I think it's not, I think what's been hard to communicate at the State of the Town table is that this is already a somewhat self-limited list. Right? There are other things
We're not getting a pony for kids.
Correct.
Right, there's no, like, there's nothing gratuitous in this, on this
But it's not even that, right?
No, handle tickets, no handle tickets.
So the point of Dr. Illinois, I mean, you know, the AP classes, I mean, I, I can tell you the specific, I mean, we have a high school student here, but, you know, I I I've definitely heard, like, we don't have this AP class that other school districts do. We don't have this elective class that other school districts do. Like, we've already created a certain amount of self-limitation just by, you know, the fact that we've had a budget. Do you wanna, I'm sorry, I don't want to put you on the spot, but
I've also heard complaints about how like, it's mostly like only juniors and seniors get the opportunity to take AP classes. Like freshmen and sophomores don't really have the opportunity. Um, and like they feel behind compared to other high schools that start like APs their freshman or sophomore year. And like, yeah, specific AP classes, like AP Gov, I've heard is a really popular one.
I'm sorry, which one?
AP Government.
Oh, Government.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of people. I feel like, feel like
AP policy.
Yeah, yeah, because there's, I feel like there's quite a few kids.
One I actually took.
That's one that I
It's a long, long time ago, so.
Yeah, so, but yeah, and just a big thing, like, I feel like freshmen and sophomores, like, those that wanna like challenge themselves, I feel like they deserve like a chance to take AP classes.
Yeah.
Like, I don't know, I, I feel like a lot of schools allow freshmen and sophomores to take runners' classes.
Do you know if it's a lot of our, our pure towns?
I was gonna say, I don't think
My Latin or your town somehow.
Yeah, I don't really know about, yeah, pure towns, so.
That's, but that's great feedback.
Yeah.
And are there, are there electives that you hear from folks that they wish there were either more sections of, more access to things that they wish that had?
You can also ask your friend then come back.
Yeah.
Definitely ask, um, electives, I think computer science, like you guys were talking about before, is that there is one. Um, maybe like, I don't know. I personally wanted to take like, um, anatomy as a junior, but like you guys are, I don't know. Like it changed to like only seniors, so I mean, there's some electives that are only allowed for seniors. So I don't, I don't know like the reasoning behind that.
Is that, is that demand? Is it because there's just so many spots?
Or is it up in for the spots and some of the AP classes really become almost all were only seniors, not really juniors.
Yeah, yeah.
Is it because seniors are given priority to register for
Their last time, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, that I understand, yeah.
So by expanding those.
If we had more, it wouldn't be possible if you want.
Yeah.
Right, right.
We have more such changes.
Yeah.
And we have some teachers running classes of thirty-eight kids.
We have to do it voluntarily where you're aware.
What classes are those? What are the, what are these popular classes?
That was, um, that was some, it was the English department.
Yeah, we have some in the English department. We have definitely in science, science is a big pinch point, but we have a lot of people, so
We've had that for math.
Yeah.
AP Bio.
And it ebbs and flows, I feel like, depending on the interest of that particular class. And so some years it's science, some years it's math.
So as part of the high school expansion offering, would that address this concern? Would there be another AP Bio?
There would be, there would definitely be more. That's why science is kind of in and of itself, a real push, because that's where tightest numbers are, but truthfully, they're, they're tight in other places too. Um, so, and some of the AP courses are, you know, it comes from the college board, they'll tell us it's developmentally appropriate for some of them for tenth graders too, but we can't even entertain that, so. And some of, and some of the courses, we also have teachers, they do a fantastic job of this, they're running three levels in a course at the same time in order to be able to let students take AP honors and college prep, particularly in our world languages. Those teachers regularly, and by the way, that is a gift from them, they, that is way over extension of what other people do where they will run large size classes in three levels all at the same time. Just to give those opportunities.
Stars of differentiation.
Yes, they are.
And I mean, I saw also that we're talking about the middle school as well.
Yeah.
For the exploratory, so that's, that's included in here. Um, I'm just gonna ask for three specific items. I don't know who's gonna be the best person to answer this, but I just wanna understand. So I, I'm assuming it's gonna be Mr. Marion. The safety and security upgrades, if, can you just briefly tell us what's included in that so that we're very clear for our colleagues on State of the Town?
Yeah, the goal is to move like a wireless panic button. It'll be kind of sort of a badge that employees wear, so it'd be an additional badge that they'll have. Uh, it's a wireless system, it'll get the door into tap it twice, and so I just need help. And it's kind of local, where you tap it multiple times, it's kind of sent in the cavalry to
Okay.
More help there.
Got it.
And could somebody who's been in the classroom explain why that would be helpful? To be able to instantly get support for students?
I would say students, fragile medical students, that's when it's most urgent. Is, yeah, I mean, obviously you can go through the process, but if you're the only adult in the room, you're with the student and you can't be also calling and trying to get, so.
Or adult medical issues, we have a few of those, yeah.
Yeah.
It is a subscription service, that's
Every year over the year.
Everyone loves that subscription mod.
They do.
Right, that's why they make the most money.
The joys of technology.
Plan, planned obsolescence.
Netflix.
Netflix, the Apple.
That's the Apple model.
And Apple.
And it's also campus-wide, so it'd be helpful, so if you're like skilling fields, you're out there across the whole campus, so you can try to activate that anywhere.
So if a student has that, oh, an injury or a medical incident on a field, then you'd be able to get instant support now also, or closer to instant.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you. World languages, what exactly is included in that? Cause that's another phased implementation um, of a total of, it looks like seventy thousand dollars year over, uh, year, yeah, no, more.
No, but maybe they are.
Hundred and sixty, something. So I would really love to have more time with them.
That's
Okay.
I think that's why I was saying, suggesting, so it's back to the leadership team, Dr. Matthews, because I think some of this is
I don't think it pays too long, but, okay.
And just, I'm curious if you could also include user fees just to see what that number looks like.
Yeah, and I just sent you, um, the last work that, um, Mr. Marion did on user fees from twenty-five, so that's at the top of your inbox.
And I understand it's going to be a big number. Maybe if we could break it down, what's, you know, music.
Yeah, this spreadsheet is broken down.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Aggressive.
Yeah. And and I will just say, so for your benefit, it's the social emotional coach and, um, programming, SEL programming that are sort of, I was just looking at what the larger numbers are, um, and so just sort of understanding exactly the levels of that programming, um, the coaches are already for the high school in McCall. Um, but just sort of understanding, um, where that that's at, cause I think um, there will be questions about this. I feel like, I'm just gonna say, I get the sense that every time a number becomes six figures, we get more questions about it. And so, I mean, I think it's just a natural human tendency. Well, no, exactly, and that's so I just wanna make sure that we sort of have
Yeah.
a clear backup on that. But I I mean, for tomorrow, um, I don't know how you both feel, but I think we have a fairly clear sense of
Yeah, I think we can give them an update with the new figures with FY twenty-six. And we can say that we're still assessing our budget priorities, right?
I think that what we need to say is we're, you know, there's nothing on here that isn't really a higher priority.
Yeah.
Right? And so I think what we're doing more than anything is really understanding the capacity for implementation and the timeline for implementation, which in some cases, those two things go together.
Yeah, that's fair, that's a really good way.
And then therefore, what the exact budget hit, the time of the, where it hits the budget would fall, right? Cause in some cases
Well, and to this Minyard G's point, there are things we've already eliminated for this budget, so
Correct.
When we were going through the process of developing this and developing these priorities, um, and we did look at the user fees and the cost of the user fees, we prioritized the things that actually had direct classroom experience for the kids and that were part of the school day. So we prioritize, um, curriculum and instruction, um, primarily. That's why you see teaching and learning is the the biggest category on here. Because we, um, were prioritizing the student's experience, being able to give them more opportunities, um, being able to, um, Um, being able to uh, make sure that they're not locked out of classes, both at the middle school and the high school, make sure we're not. Having kids spend part of their school day in a study hall, if that's not where they wanted to be.
And it's.
And.
Number one piece of feedback, it feels like I get.
Right, and is the, it is the number, it is why.
For the whole of grades.
It's why it's the the highest number and probably our largest priority on here, but. Um, and then the operation systems and support falls right behind that, because we need those operation systems and support to support the teaching and learning.
Yeah.
So um, I I would say that, you know, we have, while we can continue to go back and look at those user fees and see what it will add. I think that's why you're not seeing them on here, is because we realized that, uh, we started with everything. And then we said, what really are our priorities for the next three to five years, and it really was the teaching and learning and the things to support that. And that's what we were hearing from the community through those surveys, that's what we were hearing from the staff. Um, so I think it's important to remind the State of the Town Committee. What the number is we've already eliminated from this, that other towns may provide as part of their school day.
Yeah. Right.
And um, that it it isn't a kitchen sink budget, right, if. It's already still maintaining um, our families to support programming like music and preschool and athletics.
But while we're at the table, we should bring this, we should have a number, right, behind it, yeah.
Right.
Right, we should still be.
It's not, I mean, it's, it's.
Yeah, because they weren't, the same people that are around that table weren't on that.
Right. No, that's what I'm saying, we should bring that number, but reminding them that this this budget doesn't include even everything, that if we were truly going to create a budget.
Right.
Right.
An aspirational budget.
An aspirational budget, yeah.
This is not it.
Right.
Is I think what you're in summary saying.
Yes.
This is not an aspiration, this is.
This is not an aspiration.
This is just a solidifying teaching and learning and making sure our buildings are safe.
Right, and we have the people in support.
Correct.
To say, we we can't put new curriculum in without, we can't have a new AP program without the teacher to teach it, we can't put in.
Looking back at the community feedback that we've had in February, um, from the surveys. Um, from parents and families and community members, it was around teaching and learning and the experience of kids in the classroom.
There's a lot of, really lobbying for more central office positions too.
I'm sorry, that was not laughable.
It's not, it's actually serious.
Everyone else started laughing, I was the last one to laugh, Dr. Hackett.
Just a hard.
The country really held it.
I mean, I love when we look at those comparisons with peer districts around central office, and we have, you know, in some cases, like, a fifth of the people, right, like, it's.
Our, yeah, our entire central office.
I could go on for about thirty minutes about that, but I'll just.
So could I.
But, I mean, even.
And what it feels like to be a teacher in a district with central office support.
Yeah, a hundred percent, right, like, that's, and I think what we've prioritized, again, this is a great thing to say to State of the Town, is we prioritize the classroom level. Supports, the building supports, um, listen to our special education team, listens to our literacy team. You know, and really prioritize the things that they're like, yeah, these are genuinely missing in the classroom on the level of your classroom teachers. You know, the supports that they rely on, or would rely on if they existed. So, okay, I think that gives us a good, so we should probably just move on to our.
All right.
Future agenda items, cause we already, so for Miss Meniargie's benefit, we already took care of the policies, so.
And the consent agenda.
And the consent agenda.
Because they were just, uh, there was nothing there.
I have, yeah, moving the agenda around.
Okay, so, yes, thank you, future agenda items.
Budget, budget.
Budget.
Budget, budget, override, State of the Town. Um.
Literacy.
Literacy, that's true.
Literacy.
Um, and then we have our next meetings.
Alrighty, moving on to next meetings, I'm just.
No, 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 it's fine.
Keep things a good night.
Good night, friends.
Thanks for coming.
Um, next meetings, we have October thirtieth, uh, six thirty PM, and then uh, November third, we'll have a pre-town meeting meeting.
On earth.
You said to quiet part out loud over there, Dr.
I sure did. Can't believe, I can't believe we're here already, but it's here.
Uh, November thirteenth, which will be the fourth night of town meeting, we'll have our next regular meeting, and then November twentieth. Um, and uh, Ms. Valen is just to add to your list, if you don't have a pin in already.
Yes.
Um, one of the articles we should vote to support is the WCCP. Yes. Because the Lincoln Project is.
Is in there.
Yeah, the Lincoln killer.
Yeah.
He caved in the killer, make you go.
I had a, well, it's good. Okay, just making sure that, uh.
A lot of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you talking about at our pre-town meeting meeting, or?
Who's the? Because.
Wherever we're voting to support.
Just supporting my.
That's where I was aiming.
Yeah.
Pre-town meeting.
Yeah.
Good duck.
We have a list, yeah.
Just making sure that one was on.
Oh, yes, I wanted to say it was actually one of the first ones.
Why now? Oh, I love it.
So we, um.
Says our capital.
And then December, we have twelve four. And then twelve eighteen, and we're probably gonna need both of them.
Okay.
I'm I'm sorry, we're.
The meetings, twelve four is.
December, December, twelve, December eighteenth.
And you said we're probably gonna need both of them, right, that's what you said?
Yeah, we're in alternate plan for.
Yeah.
And the eighteenth being right before the two week.
But, but they before, the two, the last.
I think we're all gonna be excited when we're there, we're gonna say this was.
Yeah, this will be a very.
This is great.
This is a great idea.
Very jubilant.
Very, but.
I, I have.
It'll be efficient.
Yeah.
So.
We're on Zoom.
That's right, so next we have our executive session, the purpose three, which is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. As the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position.
Ready.
I make a motion for us to move into the executive session and adjourn directly from that executive session, which means we will not come back into public session following.
Need a second?
Second.
And then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, vote as unanimous, and we will move into executive session. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good to see you, thanks for coming, yeah.